Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd stand for that, and then followed by the invocation with Reverend Darrell Keeney from Lighthouse Baptist Church.
Want to take a minute. Thanks for your leadership these past couple crazy years with COVID, and I want to pray to God who does not change in his character. And so let's pray. God, thank you that you're a God who does not change, that you're constant in your character. Lord, I ask wisdom for this body gathered here tonight, that they would sense your leading. Lord, I also thank you for our, our law enforcement and our first responders and just the challenges they've had in these last few years. Lord, I ask you would guard and guide them as well. Lord, thank you for this city. Thank you, God, that you're the one who you raise up leaders, and you also bring down leaders, and God, that you're ultimately the one that calls the shots. And so we pray, again, pray your wisdom for these fine people, and thank you for this time, for them and their time of service, and thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Keeney. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stenson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. And do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have no special presentations, no organizational matters this evening. We did not receive any approved citizen communications, and takes us to ten liquor licenses, ten A. Recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the approval of application for Kelsey Grant as the new man manager for Yehwey LLC doing business as Holiday Inn Express and Suites at one zero eight zero four South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue. And I will open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the liquor license? Is the applicant in the crowd by chance? Okay, anyone wanting to speak regarding ten A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of application for Kelsey Grant as a new manager for Yehwey LLC doing business as Holiday Inn Express and Suites at one oh eight zero four South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four zero seven two, request to rezone lot three, LGB Properties Replat One from RE to RS one twenty for the purpose of existing residential development. Applicant AMZ Investments LLC, general location, one three five ten South Thirty-Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one three five one zero South Thirty-Sixth Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number four zero seven two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, real quick, is there anybody from the Fornell family or representative for them here tonight? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four zero seven three, request to rezone lots one and two here and there addition, being a replat of tax lot six B and thus part of tax lot six A two, being the north fifty feet of the west hundred and seventy-five feet of the east two hundred and sixty feet of tax lot six A, together with the south fifteen feet of the east hundred and ten feet of lot one, and the south twenty-two feet of the east eighty-five feet of the east two hundred and sixty feet of tax lot six A, together with the south fifteen feet of the east sixty-five feet of lot thirty-four, Sfabota's addition to the city of Bellevue, all located in the southwest quarter of Section Thirty-six, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RG eight dash M and B G M to R G M, or to B G M, for the purpose of residential and commercial development, applicant for city development LLC, general location two three zero four Lincoln Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-three oh four Lincoln Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Okay, and I'm going to recuse myself and turn it over to Council President Paul Cook for conflict of interest. Thanks.
Now, just for the record, the mayor has left the council chambers at six oh eight. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number four zero seven three.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Stenson, seconded by McCaw. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote. I'm sorry. Councilmember Burns?
The applicant, is applicant here currently?
Um, let me, Mr. Jungers did call me today.
Okay.
And had a family issue that he could not make, and then there's a gentleman named Rob Ryan. He was not able to make it.
Yeah.
Um, Matt McKinney is here. Um, I don't know if he'll be able to answer your question, but he did call me because, uh, just because of conflicts for the two of them.
Yeah.
And not being able to be here.
So can Mr. McKinney come up and, or is that?
Would we?
We have to do a motion for public hearing and then a second, and then at that time it could be opened.
Is that because he's not the applicant?
It's because he's not a staff member. So typically, we can only ask questions of staff outside of public hearings.
Okay. Um, well, I'll just state this real quick. I, um, I'm going to vote no, and the reason is, is I just really wasn't, uh, just based on the last meeting when we had the public hearing, I didn't feel like we really got adequate information. I feel like we still really don't have adequate information, and I think that's helpful, especially if people are asking what's going on, um, and especially in the Old Town area. So I'm going to vote no. I just wanted to explain that, put it out there for the public.
I don't know if this, I mean, I don't know what your question is, um, but my concern is it's just for the zone change. It's not what's going to happen, what's, so that's. Okay, I mean, I just, you're, you're sort of putting us in a.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's fine. I mean, if someone's got information that, I don't know if, if, if something can be disclosed or if it can't be, I don't, I don't know if someone has more information. I, I just, I think that usually, you know, someone does, I, I get its purpose of rezoning. However, I, I always think that, I mean, we just grilled the, um, the two ladies that were here for the PRTF facility, and, you know, we voiced concerns about not having a conceptual design, and, you know, that's all based around rezoning. I just always feel like there's a little additional information, and I usually feel like we're pretty protective, and we usually want more information if we are going to approve rezoning. That's my concern.
Tammy, can I ask if the rezoning is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, future land use map?
Yes, so, um, the rezoning is really to facilitate a replating. Um, it is in conformance with the overall land use map. Also, it is in conformance with what is existing along that current Lincoln Avenue corridor.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or concerns? All right, please vote.
I have five yes votes, one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you. Now we need to find the mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, eleven B C, or eleven B one, request for small subdivision, plats, lots one and two here and there addition. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that we approve eleven B one.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Welch, seconded by Councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or concern? Questions?
I have five yes votes, one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cook. Uh, eleven C. Okay, we're at eleven C, ordinance number four zero seven four, request to rezone tax lot six A six, located in the northwest quarter of Section Twenty-six, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from BG to RG twenty for the purpose of an adolescent care facility, applicant I three LLC, general location one oh five Fort Creek Road South. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one oh five Fort Creek Road South, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion that I'd like to make a comment. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero seven four.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Councilman Cook?
Um, I'd like to, a quick comment. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote no for this, and I'm basing that on the, upon the future land use map and comprehensive plan, as well as the perceived negative impact on the surrounding area. So I'm going to be voting no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, at the last meeting, we talked about finding some alternative or being able to help these folks. Have they contacted us? Have we got any communication? Is there other options for them? Because I think they have a, a good and a needed service, as we all discussed, but, uh, is there a better location?
They have not contacted us, and I think what we're, we're asking them for is the RFP, so we know exactly what they're looking for, and then we'll put the ball in motion. I think they're waiting to see how this comes out tonight. So I would imagine we'd hear from shortly thereafter.
Okay.
I think what we, it's important for us to look for a site, is that we get an RFP on that.
Sure. And, and I would prefer that the state did this, that the state had employees, rather than putting the word out, we want somebody to come into the state and do it. But since that's not happening, we do need the service, and so I'm, I'm glad we're following through and going to be available to help them out. Yep. Thank you.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to make a comment, and, and Councilmember Preister's bringing up a good, uh, reason and, uh, comments. I just want to, um, the state of Nebraska has Region Six Behavioral Healthcare, and I did talk to them about what's going on here, and they got a program called the duet. I think they called it a DD, uh, duet program, where they deal with adolescent, and this is money that, from my understanding, is funneled through the state to six counties, Sarpy, Cass, uh, Douglas, uh, whatever Fremont is, and whatever Wahoo is, I think are the, the, um, six counties. And when I was talking, I was talking to like the directors, there's a, a Region Six Behavioral Healthcare, and then there's a, the, the duet part of it, and they deal more with adolescent. And one of the comments that the lady mentioned to me that runs it is that, you know, um, they're already established. They're, they're already here, and they were surprised because they have been, if funding for Broadstep would come through the state, they had been asking the state of Nebraska for fund, additional funding for years. Uh, I sat on that board when I was on the Sarpy County, uh, board back then. I'm sure, uh, Mayor Hyke is aware of that boards when he was on the county board, someone from the, that board would have to sit on the same thing. So we do have something already set up in our community and, uh, to address adolescent issues, behavior issue, mental issues. So I, I think it is there. Um, I think it should be expanded maybe at that level. Um, so I, I, I just thought, I throw that out because I took the time. Sorry. I did do some emails and Broadstep had provided us with about a six-eight page. Um, I think a presentation they did at the planning commission, and I did that, send, I sent that to Region Six so that they could see that too. So I, it's, 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 it's not that we don't have it. I think this would just be able to add numbers of people getting treatment, but it is already in place, and the group that I talked to said, we would love for the state of Nebraska to give us additional funding so that we could treat more clients. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilman Preister?
Thank you for that update and taking the time to contact the regional office. I appreciate that. And, and I'm not saying there's no service. There is service, and I appreciate what the Sarpy County Commissioners have done and the work that they're doing to prioritize mental health, because there are a lot of folks in our prisons that need mental health, substance abuse, and other kinds of treatment. So the more we can treat people and take off some of the stigma of mental illness, the better it is for all of society. It's cheaper and it's easier to deal with things right where they happen, particularly with youth. So we catch things early and we can rehabilitate rather than trying to deal with things when they get even worse later. So thank you for that update.
Any other comments, questions?
I have one.
Three?
I just wanted to remind that the motion was to approve the ordinance. So if you vote yes, you're approving the rezoning. If you vote no, you are voting against the rezoning.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks for those. We have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting no, motion fails.
Thank you. Item eleven D, ordinance number four zero seven five, repealing Section Twenty dash two of city code regarding sale of cigarettes, tobacco, et cetera, products to minors. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven five, an ordinance to repeal Section Twenty dash two of Article One, Chapter Twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding furnishing cigarettes, tobacco, et cetera, to minors, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero seven five.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twelve ordinance for public hearing, second reading. We have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four zero seven six, authorizing providing for the issuance of general obligation various purpose refunding bonds, series two thousand twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed two million twenty thousand dollars. And finances requesting to waive the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting. Um, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven six, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, in one or more series, in the aggregate stated principal amount of not to exceed two million twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding various purpose bond series two thousand seventeen, dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued, and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same if necessary, providing for the sales of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and providing for the disposition of bond proceeds, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet or electronic form.
Okay, and then given the volatile bond market right now, I, do I have a motion to suspend the rules, hold a public hearing tonight, and vote after the public hearing? Councilman Burns?
We need a motion to waive the three readings first. Okay, so, um, I did, I moved that we, um, waive the three, the statutory, statutory rule requiring three readings, and we vote on this tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments or questions? Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch, to suspend the rules, hold public hearing tonight, and vote after the public hearing on twelve, or thirteen A. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing now, um, for thirteen A, and is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding thirteen A? Please come forward. Yep, just need you to state your name and sign in and.
All right.
Your address.
Uh, just out of curiosity, what is this money being used for?
Name and address, please.
Uh, Ottmer Stevens, Buzz Stevens, thirteen six oh one, South Twenty-Sixth Street.
Okay, well, uh, this is the, um, this is for the bond, but I think we'll have Rich come up and talk about it. Um, so, do you have any other questions, Buzz, before?
No, no.
Okay.
I was just wondering more.
All right.
Rich Severson, Finance Director, city of Bellevue. Uh, these bonds, uh, are going to be used to refinance some existing bonds, and we're going to save about a hundred thousand dollars in interest rates. We, uh, the other bonds became callable, uh, and so we've decided that we would save the taxpayers a hundred thousand and go ahead and refinance, uh, the existing bonds. Anytime we're going to be able to make a hundred thousand, um, we take a good hard look at it. So, uh, with interest rates going up and up, we thought we better grab this one, and that's also the reason for the waiving the three readings. I think every day you look at the news, the financial news, you notice there's inflation and, uh, interest rates aren't far behind. So, does that?
Just one more question here. How will that affect our?
Yeah, come to the microphone, Buzz, please. Ask the question this way. We're recording everything.
Okay, I'm sorry. How will this impact our bond rating? I think we're at, uh, double A plus?
Yep.
Correct. We don't expect any change, uh, in our bond rating. We actually asked if, uh, they'd take a good hard look at upgrading it, because we've been doing a pretty good job of managing the debt and, uh, uh, only bonding items that, uh, have a long life and are, uh, favorable to the public and to the city. So we don't expect any downgrade. We're hoping one of these days for, for an upgrade.
Okay. All right, and that's part of the reason we have the double A plus, is because we have a finance manager that's, uh, paying attention and, and doing these things to save money for the city, so.
Yeah, it's all me.
Yep, appreciate it.
A rising boat. Or a rising tide raises all boats, you know that, so.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak regarding thirteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on thirteen A. And, uh, we have any comments or questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Burns, seconded by.
We need to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Oh, that was for the public hearing. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the ordinance now? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve ordinance number four oh seven six.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Now, do I have any comments or questions? Seeing none, well, let's vote then. I'll get it straight.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero seven seven, approving issuance of certificate of participation of up to four million dollars, and authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction and related matters for the acquisition of a facility to be used as a new location for the city library. And again, uh, finances requesting to waive, uh, the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven seven, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction with U M B Bank, N A, for such other bank or trust company as may be determined, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost to acquire the new library facilities for use by the city, approving issuance, sale and delivery of not to exceed four million dollars, principal amount of certificates of participation in such lease, fixing in part and providing for the fixing in part of certain provisions of the lease and related documents and related matters.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to suspend rules? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we waive the rule requiring three readings, hold the public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to suspend the rules, hold the public hearing and vote tonight? Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing for thirteen B. If there's anyone in the If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding thirteen B, please come forward. And I, yep. You know the drill.
Yes, sir. Um, you had a video that indicated.
Name and address again.
Again.
Yep.
Uh, Buzz Stevens, thirteen six oh one, South Twenty-sixth Street.
Thank you.
Uh, question, you have a video out that says you're purchasing the, uh, property for the library. Is that correct? I saw where you had some sort of presentation you gave and so forth.
Probably should've started with Rich, but we're gonna have him come up after you get done asking your questions anyways.
All righty, um, what happens to your library?
Okay. Yep, well, let, so, so Administrator, Mr. Risto answer it.
So, the old library, um, we're negotiating the sale of that library, so not able to disclose where we're at on that yet, but once they're out, uh, we're working on an appraisal right now for the value side of it, and then we hope to repurpose it with another, another owner.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask Rich to come up and just give an explanation on thirteen B.
I'll give you a quick overview. We do have our bond counsel here if anybody wants to dive into any more details. Uh, this, uh, we're issuing four million dollars worth of bonds, uh, to finance the purchase and reno of a new, uh, library. Uh, it's split into two different bonds, one's a taxable, one's a non-taxable. The non-taxable bond is available to us be- for the part that we're gonna be used for the library, and this building comes with some built-in tenants which, uh, will use the taxable bonds to finance that part of the building and reno. Uh, this is a, a, a pretty good deal when it comes with the revenues, the lease payments to pay for this building. Over time, um, it's, that, that new, uh, library is not going to cost that much because the existing tenants will be paying for part of that library, and depending on, uh, the negotiation skills of Mr. Risto, we'll maybe get a nice dime for the, for the old property. So, uh, and, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, I heard that the library, uh, foundation was throwing in a little, a little money on this deal. So, once you get other skin in the game, uh, it's always a good deal. So, uh, if you have more detailed questions, yes?
Um, I know that you look at our finances very thoroughly, and in your opinion, as a finance director, I think you, you feel that this is a win-win deal, and it's something we should definitely do.
Uh, I look at it as a taxpayer, and I think this is one of the best ways to, uh, to find a new space for the library that won't cost that much. And as I've said before, since I think that, uh, this will probably pay for this space by itself, the people that want to, uh, pursue another library and another location, this doesn't stop any, anyone from doing that. Uh, it's, it's not like this is a burden and the first thing out of your mouth would be, well, we just bought a new library. Well, that's true, but over time, I think this will pay for itself with the other tenants. Does that explain your? Any other questions?
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rich, for that information. Yes, could you answer those same two questions that, uh, previous citizen asked? What will this do to our taxes, and the other one was, what will it do to our bond rating?
I do not expect our tax levy to go up. The levy rate of sixty-one cents right now, I don't expect that to move at all because of this deal. We've, we've been pretty careful in, uh, you know, putting new money bonds into our debt load, and, uh, we've been very aggressive in, um, paying off that exa- existing debt. Uh, many times in those refundings, even though we could've refunded and, uh, refinanced the whole thing, in many cases, I've gone ahead and paid off, you know, a couple of maturities, a couple hundred thousand, so that we're just not paying interest anymore, period. So, uh, by doing that over the years, we can go ahead and, uh, and probably afford this for those reasons and because of the revenue that comes along with this.
And even?
And, and I don't expect this to. We've had a call with, uh, S and P, and we don't have that rating, the new rating yet, but again, I expect it to be double A plus or better.
And, and I will share the appreciation for you and your staff in, in monitoring our finances, but I will also give a little credit to Bond Counsel that you have chosen wisely, and they have done an excellent job of helping us to get very good rates, and we've been very fortunate that the rates have been as low as they have, so we could capitalize on that.
They are out there looking out for us, uh, they do make a little money on it, but we have a very good relationship, and it's, uh, almost a shame not to, uh, call up Mr. Rogers here with, uh, Gilmore Bell because he comes to the meetings when we do have these bonds, but, uh, uh, if you don't have specific questions for him, I'm not sure if there's a need to, to bring him up unless somebody would like him to talk a little bit.
Come on up and introduce yourself anyway and let us thank you and not Rich.
Uh, Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell, uh, Bond Counsel. Um, yeah, the ordinance is relatively straightforward. It authorizes a lease purchase transaction for, uh, for the new library project and, uh, allows, uh, us to, uh, manage the, the division between taxable and, and tax-exempt components of it in a way that, uh, fits with the use of the project. Uh, so taxable financing for the parts that'll be leased out and then tax-exempt for the city's portion, so uh, relatively straightforward in terms of lease purchase financings with a new project like this for the city, so I'm happy to answer any questions. The documents are, in front of you are relatively long, but that's only because these types of transactions, uh, in order to feel simple and straightforward on, on the city's side, side, when you're going through it and paying them off, we, we try to put, put enough into the structure to, uh, to make it feel that way on the user's side.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Since you're already up here, I'll, I'll say the thanks, but I, I appreciate the split bonding with the taxable and the, the tax exempt, and it's good to have that clarification that both you and Rich gave. And I'm, my question to you is about our bonding. We just did a refinancing and you're monitoring others that we have. Are you seeing other things that may come up yet before the interest rates get higher, or is it too soon to tell?
Well, you're giving me too much credit because I'm just a lawyer. I'm not the, the, the underwriter is actually not here, Cody Wick, I'm at D A Davidson. Uh, he monitors all the, all, all the interest rates and, and, uh, he's the one who deserves the credit on finding the, the refinancing opportunities.
He's on the front end, you're on the back end.
I just do, I do, I do the legal work part of it, so, um, so he, he deserves more of the credit on, on that, on that piece.
I'll save my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Take our thanks back to Cody, too. Any other questions for Bond Counsel? Okay, I still have a public hearing open. If there's anybody else who would like to talk regarding thirteen B, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, do I have a motion to approve thirteen B, ordinance number four zero seven seven? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero seven seven.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Just a question about the, the leases, maybe, what are, what are the lengths of the leases of the people leasing the property?
So, Preister, those all vary, so we have some that are a year in expiration, uh, all the way up to four years. So, um, the only one that's kind of up in the air would be Bellevue Family Practice, which is on a month-to-month, but he's made a personal commitment to keep it for two more years. He's in the process of selling his practice, but in most cases, we've got long-term leases and don't expect those leases when they come back up to, to vacate the building either, so our intention is to keep them as tenants, so.
Okay, it does give us some flexibility for use of space or income from space, and the, uh, leases aren't too long, but we can negotiate new contracts and new leases as we go?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to, uh, credit Councilman Preister. He did ask a question our last conversation about the lot line and, uh, um, had Bree dig out that, um, easement, so wear cover, but it was a good question. Appreciate the question. Any other comments or questions? Okay, motion by Welch, second by Preister, please vote.
We have five yes votes, one no vote, with Mr. Burns voting no, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero seven eight, request to rezone Lot One, F J Fitzgerald subdivision replat two from RS eighty-four and ML to BN for the purpose of a childcare center. Applicant Maria M. Hernandez, general location, two five one six Chandler Road East. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-five sixteen Chandler Road East, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be held March first, two thousand twenty-two, here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four zero seven nine, request to rezone lots one fifty-four through one ninety-six and outlots F through J, Spring Ridge being a replating of tax lot twelve, tax lot thirteen A, Lot Two Bohawk Edition, and Outlot B, Green Meadows, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-two, Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG and BG to RA, BG and RG eight PS for the purpose of single-family and multifamily residential development. Applicant Orchard Valley Inc., general location, South Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held March first, two thousand twenty-two, here at the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number four zero eight zero, request to rezone lots one through thirty-eight and outlaw A, Chandler Creek, being a replating of tax lot H two located in the southwest quarter of section sixteen, Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RS seventy-two to RD, RD sixty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant TKC Chandler LLC, general location, West Chandler Road and South Thirty-sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about East Chandler Road and South Thirty-fifth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held March first, two thousand twenty-two, here in the council chambers. Item thirteen F, ordinance number four zero eight one, request to rezone lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H, Lakewood West, being a plating of the east half of the southwest quarter, together with the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, all located in section thirty-one, Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RA, BG, RG twenty PS, RG fifty, and RS seventy-two for the purpose of commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential development and primary and preliminary plat lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H, Lakewood West, applicant Woodsonia Real Estate Inc., general location, South Fifty-fourth Street and Highway three seventy. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fifth Fifty-fourth Street and Highway se- three seventy, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held March first, two thousand twenty-two, here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, request for conditional use permit for Lot Three, L G B Properties replat one for the purpose of an Alzheimer's dementia care home. Applicant AMZ Investments LLC, general location, one thirty-five ten South Thirty-sixth Street. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward.
Uh, Otmer Stevens, Buzz Stevens, whatever. Um, last time we met, this was brought up about, uh, is this the one where we're gonna change the house into a residence? Alzheimer's residence? This is in your neck of the woods there, Paul. I thought.
So, the application is a request for a conditional use permit to turn single-family residents into an Alzheimer's dementia care home that would serve up to ten to twelve residents. It will still function, uh, primarily as a, as a residential, um, be care- residential in nature. Um, it will not be, you know, a large commercial facility, anything like that.
Well, I question that because, uh, what's their investment gonna be?
I can't answer that.
Reason why I ask, I would think the resources that they're gonna use to upgrade, to change, everything else could be better spent on a new facility with the right, uh, uh, security, et cetera. Kathy, you think otherwise?
I think with the cost, if you've looked at the cost lately of, um, new construction and finding land, finding the location, finding the builders, putting it all together, it's way easier to, um, in a property to, uh, remodel interior and to change everything that they need and add to it than it is to find an existing building.
Well, I, I have flashbacks of, uh, Saint Francis and D H H S. That's what my worry is. Also, it's a residential area. It needs to stay. It's my neck of the woods, Paul, is that correct?
Yes, but it, it sits on about four acres.
So, that's four acres. It could be a residence.
It's gonna remain a single-family residential zoning, so it will be compatible with the existing development in the area.
So. Mr. Stevens, I think, and Tammy, help me out here, this is a conditional use permit. So, if they would close business down the road, we are, we, earlier we zoned it residential. It was not zoned residential before. Now, we have pretty much the matching zoning for what's around that home. Is that correct?
Correct. They will, if, if approved, they will function under a conditional use permit agreement, which is signed specifically with them and, um, you know, their LLC. So, if there are any changes that need to be made down the road, they'll have to come back through for public hearing.
Okay, all righty. And if they do go bankrupt, whatever, there's no liability that we're gonna be stuck with?
No.
No, okay. All righty, I have flashbacks. What's it, Paradise Trailer Court?
Well, that was a residential.
Well, I realize that, but.
I don't think this place is gonna flood.
It ended up my pocket in the long run. That's, that's the one thing I'm trying to hit the floor with.
Different discussion there, because there, we took care of that one, but, yep. Anybody else would like to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward if there is. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, Mrs. Zuger is here. I'm not sure who. I just want to know that the client, the person that's moving this forward is here. So if, if anybody would have had any questions specific, but I'll make a motion. We approve fourteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution number two zero two-two dash zero five. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the CRR SSA Fund Purchase Agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation in exchange for receiving a share of the cash payment in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion. We approve fifteen A.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, second by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the twelfth extension to the contract with Justin Thomas for custom farming approximately sixty-one acres at Thirty-sixth Street and Cape Art Road in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. And the twelfth extension to the contract with Justin Thomas for custom farming approximately sixty-two acres near the Bellevue Sports Complex in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and to waive council policy for requiring solicitation of bids and goods and services costing more than thirty thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen B as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant subrecipient agreement with Albright Glass and Screen in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And I'm gonna recuse myself for items sixteen C through sixteen G. Let Council, Council President Paul Cook take over, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor has left the chamber, uh, council chamber at six fifty-three. On sixteen C, I need a motion. Councilmember Stenson?
Make a motion. We approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Stenson, second by Councilmember Welch. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve and authorize the council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant CD BG subrecipient agreement with Marathon Ventures LLC in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Preister?
Thank you. I will motion to approve item sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Preister, second by Councilmember Welch. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Um, I know Abby's in the house, and just for the record, the reason that we are extending these is that they just didn't get the money used in their timeframe. Is it kinda like a paperwork type of thing?
It's a paperwork. It's just to officially extend that agreement so they can retain the use of those funds.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Abby.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize this, this, a council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant CD BG subrecipient agreement with Bellevue Junior Sports Association in the amount of five thousand, thirty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you. I move that we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
I have a se- second by Councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Preister?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. Uh, Abby, each of these has a letter that they've requested. And in those letters, some are requesting different amounts of time. Nine months, six months. The extension is gonna be equal. It gives them all a year. Is that right?
It gives them all a year, that there's no confusion, and that way, if for some reason they ask for six months, something happens, they want additional three, we don't have to bring it back to you. But as soon as they expend those funds, we'll close out the agreement.
Right, and it was helpful. I'm, I'm appreciative of having all those letters in there, so we understand what the difficulties were that they had, why they couldn't do it. Most of it relating to COVID supplies and timing, and it's, it's good to understand, so when we do something. The one issue that came up was the challenge of completing things a contractor would have, particularly the first one on the sidewalk.
Yes.
Is there any way we can, I know it's federal, any way we can streamline or make that easier for people?
We're, we're attempting to. The, because it, the contract is over two thousand, there's not much I can do to reduce the requirements. I've just tried to meet with some of the contractors and explain that it seems overwhelming, but once you get in and discuss it, it's not as bad as it seems. And I am working with, um, Albright to see if we can't find a contractor that's worked, previously worked on CD BG, understands the requirements, and maybe would be better able to complete the project.
Good. Above and beyond your usual good work, trying to even get contractors for somebody. So once again, tonight is a great example, and you're an excellent example of how the city is working for people and trying to make things better and help them in these regards. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant CD BG subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Burns, second by Councilmember Stenson. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen G, approve and authorize the council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant CD BG subrecipient agreement with Eastern Nebraska Community Action Plan in cap in the amount of nineteen thousand, sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen G.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Burns, second by Councilmember Preister. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cook. Okay, takes us to sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a five-year maintenance contract with KFT Fire Trainer for annual preventative maintenance service to keep burn props operational in an annual amount not to exceed eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion. We approve sixteen H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stenson, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a five-year service agreement with Stryker for annual preventative maintenance in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement in the professional services agreement with Alfred Venish and Company for the municipal separate storm sewer system annual reporting in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Take a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month. February report will be attached to the March first council packet. Comments on the last packet? Okay. Those will go on the record. We have no closed session, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Prester to adjourn. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.